All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of December fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Appropriate agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the door at the back of the room. If you park in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held November thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. May I have a motion?
Move approval.
That was Harris?
Second, Lust.
Lust. Jerry, please call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
We will now have a special presentation for Commissioners Lust, Cornelius, and Sunderman, who we would like to recognize at this time, at this time, as this is their final Planning Commission meeting. Janelle, Michael, and Lynn, could you please go to the front of the podium? As they're stepping forward, I'd ask Jerry to read the resolutions of appreciation for each Commissioner.
Okay, resolution number PC one five three zero, or zero one five three zero, whereas Janelle Lust was appointed to the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on August seventeenth, two thousand and nine, and reappointed on November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to complete the review process of the most recent Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Long Range Transportation Plan Updates, thus contributing over seven years of volunteer service to the Lincoln and Lancaster County community as a member of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department. And whereas during her years of service, Ms. Lust contributed countless hours and diligent effort toward the adoption of both major and periodic updates to the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Long Range Transportation Plan, and updates to the county and city zoning codes, and reviewed over one thousand two hundred and six development applications. Other projects and studies of major importance which came before the Planning Commission during her term include but are not limited to the Downtown Master Plan Update Transit Development Plan, Implementing West Haymarket Arena Redevelopment Plan, University Place Planned Unit Development, Use Group Zoning Ordinance Revision, New Simplified Process to Create Smaller Acreage Lots with Open Space Preserved, Long Range Transportation Plan Major Update and Comprehensive Plan Major Update, Outdoor Lighting Standards Update, Large-Scale Wind Energy Projects, Streamlining the Process of Subdivisions and Waivers of Design Standards, and Review of Various Watershed Master Plans and Redevelopment Plans, Reform Zoning Barriers Subcommittee, South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan, and Capital Improvement Program Review. And whereas, the growth and development of Lincoln and Lancaster County has benefited greatly from the years of dedicated service of Ms. Lust, and whereas, in recognition of over seven years of loyal and dedicated service, it is the desire of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission to express their appreciation and gratitude, and to commend Janelle Lust for her dedicated volunteer service, and to cause such expression of appreciation and gratitude to forever be made a part of the official records of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission that the appreciation and gratitude of all are hereby extended to Janelle Lust in recognition of her dedicated service, support, and contributions to the public planning process for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to briefly say, when I was interviewed by some members of the City Council to see if I had an interest to be on the Planning Commission, probably the worst advice I got was, never trust staff. And after seven years, I have discovered how hard the planning staff and the planning department really work. And of those thousand whatever, fifty-six development projects that came forward, I can probably count on two hands and maybe a few toes, the number of times the planning staff recommended denial. And I think that's because they work very, very hard with the neighbors and the developers, so by the time it makes us, makes adhere to the commission, we can get to a point where we're at a yes. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody's always happy, but maybe everybody's should be just a little bit unhappy, because that means that we're putting forward a good project. So, thank you for the hard work, staff. I've really appreciated working with you.
Thank you, Janelle. Okay, the next resolution is resolution number PC zero one five three one, whereas Michael Cornelius was appointed to the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on March sixth, two thousand and six, for a partial term expiring August of two thousand and nine, was reappointed on August seventeenth, two thousand and nine, to serve a six-year term, and then reappointed on November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to complete the review process of the most recent Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Long Range Transportation Plan Updates, thus contributing over ten years of volunteer service to the Lincoln and Lancaster County community as a member of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission. And whereas, during his years of service, Mr. Cornelius contributed countless hours and diligent effort toward the adoption of both major and periodic updates to the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Long Range Transportation Plan, and updates to the county and city zoning codes, and reviewed over one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two development applications. Other projects and studies of major importance which came before the Planning Commission during his term include but are not limited to the Downtown Master Plan Update Transit Development Plan, Implementation of the Antelope Valley and West Haymarket Arena Redevelopment Plan, University Place Planned Unit Development, New Simplified Process to Create Smaller Acreage Lots with Open Space Preserved, New Conditional Use Option for Small Single Family Lots, New Design Standards for Downtown and Antelope Valley, New Outdoor Lighting Standards, Sign Ordinance Updates, New Rules for Rural Home Occupations, Standards for Small and Large-Scale Wind Energy Projects, More Flexible Rules for Restaurants Serving Alcohol and for Outdoor Dining, Use Groups, Zoning Ordinance Revision, Streamlining the Process of Subdivisions and Waivers of Design Standards, Review of Various Watershed Master Plans and Redevelopment Plans, Reform Zoning Barriers Subcommittee, South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan, and Capital Improvement Program Review. And whereas, the growth and development of Lincoln and Lancaster County has benefited greatly from the years of dedicated service of Michael Cornelius, and whereas, in recognition of his more than ten years of loyal and dedicated service, it is the desire of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission to express their appreciation and gratitude, and to commend Michael Cornelius for his dedicated volunteer service, and to cause such expression of appreciation and gratitude to forever be made a part of the official records of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission that the appreciation and gratitude of all here, all are hereby extended to Michael Cornelius in recognition of his dedicated service, support, and contributions to the public planning process for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County.
Thank you.
Michael Cornelius, thirty-one forty-nine hours. I've really felt very privileged to, for the last ten-plus years, to be able to participate in visualizing and helping to realize the future of the community we want to live in. And I have been extremely gratified to be a member of this group, this group which wrestles regularly with difficult issues that face our community, and we have always done so in a deliberate and thoughtful way, and we can agree, both agree and disagree, and come away as friends, and I really appreciate that, and I appreciate being able to work with you all these years. Thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Michael. Not least, resolution number PC zero one five three two, whereas Lynn Sunderman was appointed to the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on December fifteenth, two thousand and three, for a six-year term, was reappointed on August seventeenth, two thousand and nine, to serve for another six-year term, and then reappointed on November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to complete the review process of the most recent Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Long Range Transportation Plan Updates, thus contributing over thirteen years of volunteer service to the Lincoln Lancaster County community as a member of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission. And whereas, during his years of service, Mr. Sunderman contributed countless hours and diligent effort toward the adoption of three major updates, as well as periodic updates to the Lincoln Lancaster County Plan, or Comprehensive Plan and the Long Range Transportation Plan, and updates to the county and city zoning codes, and reviewed over two thousand six hundred and forty-six development applications. Other projects and studies of major importance which came before the Planning Commission during his term include but are not limited to the Downtown Master Plan Update Transit Development Plan, Implementing Antelope Valley and West Haymarket Arena Redevelopment Plan, University Plan, or University Place Planned Unit Development, New Simplified Process to Create Smaller Acreage Lots with Open Space Preserved, New Conditional Use Option for Small Single Family Lots, New Design Standards for Downtown and Antelope Valley, New Outdoor Lighting Standards, Sign Ordinance Updates, New Rules for Rural Home Occupations, Standards for Small and Large-Scale Wind Energy Projects, More Flexible Rules for Restaurants Serving Alcohol and for Outdoor Dining, Use Groups, Zoning Ordinance Revision, Streamlining the Process of Subdivisions and Waivers of Design Standards, Review of Various Watershed Master Plans and Redevelopment Plans, Reform Design Standards Subcommittee, South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan, Capital Improvement Review, and Capital Improvement Program Review. And whereas, the growth and development of Lincoln Lancaster County has benefited greatly for the years of dedicated service of Mr. Sunderman, and whereas, in recognition of his thirteen years of loyal and dedicated service, it is the desire of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission to express their appreciation and gratitude, and to commend Lynn Sunderman for his dedicated volunteer service, and to cause such expression of appreciation and gratitude to forever be made part of the official records of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission that the appreciation and gratitude of all are hereby extended to Lynn Sunderman in recognition of his dedicated service, support, and contributions to the public planning process for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say that it's been an honor to serve with you. It's a great group of people, and it's been a privilege to serve with staff and see the skill and the commitment they have to this city. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
I just want to make a real quick comment, and, you know, obviously very much thank you to Janelle and Lynn and Michael for all your years of service. And what really struck me when we were working on those resolutions and thinking about all the years of service that you had is the, the fact is that all of you are volunteers, and you do this because you care about our community. And I really want to express my gratitude to all of you, and especially to those of you that are now retiring from us. Thank you very much, and we also want to welcome our three new members, who are gonna, about to find out what they got in themselves. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
I would entertain a motion for all three resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you to all three. They've been immeasurable support and contribution to the Planning Commission, Planning Department.
Can I add something? I want to, I want to say thank you, and thanks for sharing your time, all of you, but I've learned so much from all three of you, and especially how you have a tendency, I think all of us who are up here will agree to this, that you have a way of, or you've had a way of bringing us along, and it's really valuable, and I just feel really fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with you guys for the last, in my case, through three years. It's been great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, immediately following today's hearing, there will be a reception in the adjacent room, studio room one thirteen, and everyone is invited, so.
Thanks, Jerry. We will now proceed to today's agenda. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items, number one point two, Special Permit zero seven zero one zero A, and number five point one, Preliminary Pla, number one six zero zero six. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action to the Planning Commission to the City Council or County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the respective clerk. Appeals to the City Council must be made within fourteen days of Planning Commission's action. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council. The next item of business is Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there's a request from someone wishing to speak, or at the request of a commission mender, commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all the Consent Agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you do wish to speak on an item on the Consent Agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the Consent Agenda and is scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section Three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the Consent Agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on Consent Agenda?
Thank you. Item one point one is text amendment number one six zero one nine, amend Sections twenty-seven point oh six point one eight zero, twenty-seven point six two point one five zero, and twenty-seven point six three point four seven zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code to Add Assembly Facilities as a Conditional Use in the H four district and Allow Assembly Facilities in the Planned Service Commercial Special Permit, and appealing, or repealing Sections twenty-seven point zero six point one eight zero, twenty-seven point six two point one five zero, and twenty-seven point six three point four seven zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Item one point two is Special Permit Number zero seven zero one zero A to expand the existing store, including the alcohol sales area on property generally located at forty-three thirty-five North Seventieth Street. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the city clerk within fourteen days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either one of these Consent Agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
The item oh seven oh ten oh eight.
Okay, okay, that item will be carried over to, under public hearing, for a separate public hearing, as item three point one. We'll remove that from the Consent Agenda. Okay.
Is that it, Jerry, then?
No, we'll call it as item three point one after we vote on the remaining item on, under consent. You're welcome.
I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of the balance of the Consent Agenda.
Second, Weber.
Thank you.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is on the text amendment one six zero one nine, the item remaining on consent. Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
There are no requests for deferral for today's agenda. We will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant will, shall have opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak, unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, item three point one, Special Permit Number zero seven zero one zero A to expand the existing store, including alcohol sales area on property generally located at forty-three thirty-five North Seventieth Street. This is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the city clerk within fourteen days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none. Andrew?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff. This is an application for an expansion of a nonconforming use. The nonconforming use is the alcohol sales distance. So if we look on the screen here, we're at Seventieth and Havlock. This is the Casey's General Store and Gas Station. Right now, they are, let's see, the existing site is fifty feet from residential on the south, and fifteen feet from residential on the west. Typical alcohol sales separation would be a hundred feet from residential in this district. This is their proposed site plan. They're showing an additional nine feet on the south towards the residential, additional eight feet on the north. And I think it would make the most sense if I kind of just go into the background of this site a little bit. So this was the site in two thousand and seven, before the initial special permit was approved. This was a convenience store that was selling alcohol. There was an apartment building immediately to the south, about three feet or so, and a single-family house to the west, about five feet away. In two thousand and seven, this site was proposed to be redeveloped, and that's when this initial special permit was approved. So here's the site today, and this is what was approved in two thousand and seven. This is the new Casey's, was redeveloped over the entire site. Alcohol separation was increased to the south to fifty feet. It was only about three feet. To the west, it was increased to fifteen feet. It was about five feet before. There's quite a bit of landscaping added around the site. There was a fence put up along the south side for the neighbors. The alley here was paved, so there were quite a few site improvements with that redevelopment. This amendment, as I mentioned, would be expanding the building nine and a half feet here to the south, nine feet to the north. So we look at, what's the impact on the site going to be with this amendment? There is a dumpster enclosure on the south side of the building that will be getting pushed closer to the alleyway. Right now, that enclosure is surrounded by a chain-link fence with like wood or plastic slats. That would be replaced with a brick wall. And then south of the brick wall would be some cedar trees, some small cedar trees planted there. So we think overall, this is gonna have a net positive impact on the site. Do we have any questions?
I have a few.
Yeah.
When you're measuring the fifty feet, does that include the alley space or just to the property line?
It's to the residential property line.
So it is across the alley, then?
Yeah, across the alley.
And then the fence that was put up, that's on the residential side, then, kind of like...
Yeah, that was an agreement, I think, with the neighbors at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
I'm James Dameron of P and R Architects, twenty-two hundred South Promenade Avenue, Rogers, Arkansas, seven two seven five eight. Andrew explained very well what we plan on doing, what we'd like to do, I should say, and we've worked with Andrew on exactly what we need to do to make improvements to the property. There's already been quite a few improvements from two thousand and seven, and, you know, planning stress that we need to improve once again, if we have any hope of doing addition to the site. But I'm here for any questions.
Do you recall if you paid for the fence that was put up?
Yes, sir, Casey's paid for the fence back in two thousand and seven, and the pavement of the alley, too.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Please come forward.
I'm Mike Murphy at sixty-nine twenty-eight Ballard. I'd like to be in favor of this special permit, and I would like to suggest some additional work to be done at this time. This concerns the power pole at the southwest corner of Casey's. There's a tree growing out of the fence line. It's growing into the power line, and I'm afraid that someday it's going to short it out or cause some damage to it. So since you're working on that area, it'd be a good time to cut down that tree. That's it?
Great. Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do they have anything for staff?
Could Andrew just address?
Yeah.
Oh, actually, I need to ask, is there anybody else here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Please come forward.
My name is Laurie Mena Brooker. I live at sixty-nine fifty-four Ballard, directly behind the Casey's store and the alley there. The problems I have with Casey's store right now, they did pave the alley, and that was pretty nice of them to do that. But all it is, is just an extension of their parking lot. Basically what it is, is it leaves access for trucks and trailers, and they like to park in there all the time, which is blocking it. The problem I have with the addition to it, they lack space for snow removal. They have a tendency to push the snow directly up against my fence, which is in the alley, and I've had to replace boards on my fence already because of this. I've talked to them, and they keep telling me this. The garbage man, he comes down the alley. I have my garbage picked up from the alley. They can't get through there. They have a snowdrift piled up in front of it. So, you know, I don't have a problem with adding on, but what are they going to do with the snow? And all the extra trash that it involves. I have a lot of extra trash in the alley, a lot of traffic going down it now, because it's just a corridor through there. So that's where I'm at with that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Could you spell your name? I'm sorry, Eddie.
I pay you pardon?
Spell your name.
M E N E B R O K E R.
Thank you.
And as far as the fence is back there, when they originally did this plan, I got a letter stating that they were gonna maybe put a wood fence up for me, and I still have that letter. I don't have it with me today, but I still have that letter. And then when they got done with the project, I asked them to put that wood fence up, and they denied me. They refused to do anything for me. So my neighbor and myself, we put the fence up, and I paid for it myself. They didn't do that, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to thank him for coming up today. When I was researching, I noticed that he's been the property owner since before these changes occurred, so it was important for me to hear from you. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Okay, now, Andrew, would you come up?
Could you just address the tree removal process, and whether that's involved in our process at all, or if that's a separate issue, and who should be in charge of evaluating that?
Yeah, I was just speaking with the applicant, and he thinks the tree will be removed with this site plan. They're removing all the shrubbery in the southwest corner and putting in their new... They're removing all the shrubbery in the southwest corner and putting in their new miniature cedar trees there, so I believe the tree will just, will be removed with this, assuming it's on, actually on the Casey's part of the property.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm curious to hear what might happen to resolve some of the issues with the neighbor who came forward.
With the snow?
With the snow removal. I mean, I realize these are operational issues, but certainly the alley being used for something more than just truck deliveries, and snow removal is a big thing here.
Yeah. So pushing snow on the public alley would be not allowed, and I think that'd be a complaint to Public Works that the neighbor can make. I'm not sure with this specific special permit that we can really address that, but that, that's already something that would not be allowed, is pushing your snow onto the public alley, so.
And parking in the public alley would also...
Correct, yeah.
Be a complaint that you would make to Public Works?
Yeah, and I should note, when they're expanding the building, they need to add, I think, two additional parking stalls, and they're providing those stalls on the north side of the site, away from the alley.
Any other questions?
I would just clarify, I think the parking offense would probably be something you would address to the police non-emergency number. And I would encourage the neighbor who came forward, when he observes these problems, to give a call to the police non-emergency number or Public Works in the case of snow removal problems, because that will be the right way to get that addressed. There's not much we can do about it, unfortunately.
Any other questions for Andrew?
402-441-6000.
Thank you.
Not that I have called it at all.
Applicant rebuttal? Sir, do you want to come up one more time?
As Andrew said, that we would remove the existing landscaping on the south side of the lot so that we could put up new, miniature, more appropriate landscaping. And we would take care of that tree that's growing to the power pole. That's a safety issue right there. And whether it's on the property or not, that's, our contractor would take care of that. As for the operational issues, I'll make sure that Casey's knows this, and hopefully we'll not have that issue again. As far as the parking in the alleyway, it's operational as well. And I do know that trucks pull off the alley or onto the alley while servicing the convenience store, but they aren't allowed to park there. And if they do, it should be reported.
Any questions?
Could you address the question about who actually paid for the fence?
Casey's told me that they paid for the fence at the time. I don't know about the installation of the fence. That is, that's a good point right there, so.
And you'll check with the right people?
Yes, ma'am, because I deal with the construction department over there. So I'm not too happy about that comment right there. And then I'm also, in looking at the fence, the fence seems to be in very good condition. Basically, some boards have been replaced, so that's a, somebody has taken very good care of it, the property owners are.
You might want to look at reimbursing the owner for that.
Yes, sir.
Do you, can you share with us maybe the manager's name of the facility there so that...
I don't have the manager's name of it, but I can make sure that I get that.
And just share it with the neighbors, so if they have concerns, they can, they have kind of a direct communication there?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am, rather. Yeah, not only just the manager of the store, but also the regional manager as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval, Lust.
Second, Cornelius.
Discussion?
I just want to thank both the neighbors that came up today and brought these issues to our concern so that we can get them kind of addressed and hopefully kind of clean up some problems, spots there and move forward.
Thanks. I'm gonna vote in favor of the item. I also appreciate the fact that both of you have come up and brought some issues forward. I hope that there can be some communication between yourselves and Casey's and make sure that this is better managed than what it is and that the issues that you've pointed out are taken care of. Jerry, please call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hoof?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. Next item under public hearing administrative action is item 4.1, annexation number 16013 to annex approximately 36.94 acres, more or less, for a new fire police station, including several surrounding lots on property generally located at South 66th Street and Pine Lake Road. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none. Brian?
Good afternoon, Brian Will, Planning Department. As noted, this is a request for annexation, but it's really in response to a public project that is property purchased by the City of Lincoln for the purpose of constructing a new fire and police station. I'd note that Assistant Chief Pat Borer is here to talk about that portion of it. I'm gonna open this up and talk primarily about the annexation that's before you today. So to put it in perspective, looking at the aerial that was provided as part of your, part of your packet, the area that we're talking about is outlined in the, with the dashed line. This is South Seventieth Street, Pine Lake Road, so we're just a little bit west of that. And all these properties involved are on the south side. This is South 66th Street, which then runs north from Pine Lake Road into Country Meadows Residential Development. The lot that the city has purchased is this one right here, and it's just immediately south of the intersection of South 66th and Pine Lake Road. So as we initially looked at this, the fire station, of course, is going to require city water and sewer, and of course, the condition of connecting to those utilities for this site, as any other, is annexation within the City of Lincoln, according to policy. And so after looking at this property, the discussion then expanded a bit. Again, here's the property we're talking about today. What I've highlighted here, this blue line, of course, up is north. This blue line is the corporate limit for the City of Lincoln, so everything beyond that line up here is within the city limit. Everything out here is outside. So as we look at the property in question, this lot right here, we have annexed property to the west at the intersection of Seventieth and Pine Lake Road. That property's also been, has been annexed. And so we're talking about six lots here, property purchased by the City of Lincoln and five others, that we recommended this request for annexation then be expanded to include them. And so why did we do that? The comprehensive plan does include a policy regarding annexation. And so as we, as we read through that policy, it was staff's finding that these properties meet that and comply with that. And why do I say that? We have Pine Lake Road, which currently has been approved about this location to this, to this point right here. Those improvements are scheduled to be extended through to Seventieth Street within the next couple of years, 2018, 2019. So that design is well underway, and the process for getting those improvements underway is well in process. Additionally, there is city water and sewer in Pine Lake Road. Those utilities currently exist, and so would then also be available to not only the fire station, but also the lots adjacent. As a matter of fact, the folks at Public Works, Wastewater Division, have told me that in conjunction with the improvements in Pine Lake Road, they will be extending service taps across prior to the paving improvements in Pine Lake Road, so somebody doesn't have to come back after the fact anticipating that those property owners would want those utilities. And so proximity to sewer and water. Additionally, the properties are all developed. They currently have improvements on them, whether it be single-family or the youth, the religious facility to the west, so they're all urban in character. So as we looked at this, we found that it met the policy. Utilities are available. It's contiguous to the city limit. It's urban in character, met the city's policy for annexation, and so we are recommending approval of annexation of not only the property owned by the city, but the five adjacent lots. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question. I'd like to use my newness to the commission as the reason for some of these probably elementary questions, but can you tell me, in the process of annexing, do you contact all of the landowners? And if so, what were their responses to this gift of annexation?
Yeah, that, there's, there's, beyond the notice requirement that the planning commission of this hearing, there is no, there is no requirement, no legal requirement, but I can tell you, we do notify those folks beyond that. And it depends. I've been to, over the years, public hearings, or public meetings, rather, at a church or fire station, somewhere where the neighbors could be invited to come and answer questions. What's been going on down here in this area because of both the search for a new fire station and the improvements of Pine Lake Road? I think everybody, for some time, has been sort of on notice that annexation here is likely. And I think Assistant Chief Borer's gonna talk a little bit more about meetings that they've had down in this area with neighbors. But beyond that, I put together a letter with an information packet that I sent to each landowner of these properties involved in advance of this hearing. I did get calls from a couple of them with questions, but there was nobody that called me that was opposed to this annexation.
And then, is there a cost? I mean, I understand there's a lot of benefit to being within the city limits, but is there an actual cash cost to the new residents for annexation? Do they need to pay for any of this?
No, not, well, not a result of what exactly we're doing here today, but when you come into the city, yes, things change a bit. You may be changing school districts, you may be, some of these properties are already looked at. Some of them are already in LPS, but some are in waiverly. So those, so those tax rates are different between the school districts, so that may change for some of them. There are some, there are some taxes that we have in the city that do not, that are not charged those outside city limit. So of course, yes. What's that differential? I'd measure it on a, you know, annual tax bill for any one of these property owners to be in the, in the hundreds of dollars, something less than a thousand dollars. But yes, there is, there is an increase in cost for properties such as these upon annexation. But we're doing this annexation, this process here today for free, so there's no cost associated with this.
Thank you.
Brian, the southern and eastern boundary, is that just at the bottom of the line? This, no, go.
Whoops, right here.
No, the southern bound, go down. No, the annexation of the...
Yes, right here. This, yes, this is, sorry, let me use another map. This one, then, in pink, it's a little bit zoomed in, so it's the same, but this, this then shows what exactly...
The entire annexation area.
Yes, so there's one lot, two lots, and these are long, narrow, three lots, four, five and six.
Okay.
Okay. Brian, can you kind of point out on there where the, where the anticipated bike path will be?
Well, yeah, it's, I do believe it's coming up, it's coming up along the tracks, along this, along the drainage.
It almost just follows...
I know we're anticipating that crossing being constructed as part of the Blanchard intersection here, so the anticipation is that it's coming up.
It almost follows the railroad track line for the most part?
I believe, if anybody's, yeah.
Okay.
Do you know when the road will be started?
Pine Lake Road, talking to the project engineer for that, I think, construction, actual construction, 2018, 19. So right now, they're ramping up, gearing up, doing everything that has to be done in advance of that, but that project is imminent, is what I'm told.
And that railroad track is not vacated, right? It's still...
No, it's still active for the time being. It's not used much, but it's still active.
So I'm assuming most of this, not all of it, is AGR zone?
The corner is...
So I guess my question is, is when you get ready to build a fire station, do you need to change zone on that?
No, not gonna have to do that. It's public facility owned by the city. Wouldn't be exempt to those zoning regulations of the AG district, AGR.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you. My name's Pat Borer. I live at 6138 Leighton Avenue. I am the Assistant Chief of the Lincoln Fire and Rescue Department. I also work at 1801Q, which is our headquarters department. So thank you for hearing me. Thank you for your service. I appreciate it. I am, I guess I'm an applicant. I'm not used to that term. We are the owners of that 10-acre property in the middle of the annexation that Brian showed you just a little bit ago. And so as an applicant, we are in favor of the annexation, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
How do the meetings with the neighbors go?
They go, as you might imagine, there are, there are those in favor, and there are also those opposed. When I met with the neighborhood group on September the 29th, we invited, I invited, my staff and I invited the neighbors from all around the area to a community meeting. And the big concerns from the neighbors were the roundabouts, which are gonna occur at Blanchard, and then I think there's another roundabout somewhere in the Pine Lake Road development. I'm not sure exactly where. They didn't like those at all. They, they, they were concerned about the floodway. That area of Pine Lake Road is a low area. There's a couple of drainages that cross Pine Lake Road, and they were concerned that we would, we would be on an island and not be able to get anywhere when there was high water. And I've been working with the planning department, the Public Works Department, and in my discussions with the Public Works Department, they're gonna, they're gonna raise, in the redevelopment of Pine Lake Road, they're gonna raise Pine Lake Road. They're also gonna install culverts, which will allow greater, greater flow through the culverts, so there won't be as much, there won't be as much overtopping of Pine Lake Road as there is today, or there was, there was in the past. So in answer specifically to your question, there's all, all sides at the community meeting.
So it sounds like it was more concern about the roads and that kind of issue than about annexation and having a fire station, police station nearby?
Some of the, some of the residents of the Country Meadows Neighborhood Association were concerned that we would drive through the neighborhood. And on the way to the community meeting, I drove through the neighborhood specifically to look and see if that was a possibility. If you've been through the neighborhood, it really doesn't go anywhere. And when we're going someplace on an, in an emergency, we like to get there quickly. And so I informed the neighbors that unless we were going into the neighborhood on an emergency, we would, we would not likely travel through the neighborhood. It just doesn't get us anywhere quickly. And so that was a concern of theirs, about us driving through the neighborhood, but, but I just informed that we wouldn't do that. Will we be traveling up and down, up and down Pine Lake Road? Absolutely. Whether we were at that site, east of there, west of there, we would be traveling up and down Pine Lake Road. So that, that's kind of a, that's kind of a given wherever we, wherever we land, if we don't land at this particular spot. With the roads not being completed until 2018, 2019, is that... We hope that, I agree with Brian, I've talked with Public Works, they hope to maybe begin on Blanchard in 2017, but it all depends upon contractors. If it doesn't start next week, or next year, excuse me, on that particular portion, it will all fall in eighteen, nineteen, twenty construction seasons. We hope to be completed in the eighteen construction season. So not next year, but the year after. So, we will work very closely with Public Works Department, coordinate with their projects so that we don't interfere with each other. There may be a portion of time where we have to move out of the station while they're doing the roadway directly in front of the station. We recognize that might be a possibility, but we, I've been in contact with several members of Public Works, and we are willing to work closely with them to make both of these projects work very well.
Dennis?
You don't have any concern about the roundabouts?
No, they build them so we can travel through them. Personally, I don't drive through enough of them to have a perspective one way or the other. I trust the engineers that say that they are, they move traffic, and as a public servant in an emergency response occupation, being able to move through traffic is what I like. And so, I have to trust that they do what they do.
Very good.
Yeah.
As far as the location of the railroad, that's not an issue for...
Not an issue. It's a bit of a concern because I don't know what the future holds. As Brian indicated, it doesn't hold much traffic today. It is an active track, but there are just very few trains that travel it. I don't know what the future holds. And so, there is a potential based upon the energy policies of our country, different things like that with coal trains and things like that, that may dictate in the future if it becomes very active. I don't know. So, at the present time, I'm not concerned, but I just don't know what the future holds.
Thank you. Other questions? Lynn?
Yeah, currently, this is in the county, where do they get their fire protection from?
They get it from Southwest Rural Fire Department, I think. Either Southwest or Southeast Rural, one of those two districts, I'm not sure where their borderline is. And this goes back, ma'am, to your question. What benefit is it to being in the city? It's interesting, I get calls from folks that are across the street and in the county, and they ask me why I didn't come to their emergency. And I tell them, because you're not in the city. I can only go where the city limits are. And so, a big benefit to the residents on either side of the proposed lot for the police and fire station will be they'll get city services. There'll be a police and fire protection that they don't get today.
Do you have a sort of estimate of the response time change for those people that were previously not within your allowed reach, so to speak?
Well, it's a difficult question to ask because you'd have to pinpoint a spot on the map, and then I could figure the difference. Obviously, and I don't mean to be rude, but my response time to my neighbor next door will be seconds. Right now, it's probably over, around in the neighborhood of eight minutes, depending upon which resource I'm sending. But any place between that particular point and my closest fire station, then you'd have to work out the differential. But we are a long ways from that spot. Right now, my closest stations are Eighty-Fourth and South Street and Forty-Eighth and Clare, which is roughly Forty-Eighth and Highway Two. I'm a long ways from the citizens in the city of Lincoln at that spot.
And your goal is four minutes?
Four minutes, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have questions for staff?
I have one. Brian, as they get further along the phase of, you know, constructing this, everything getting approved, will they have to come back through at all for, through Planning Commission or City Council or anything for any thing?
Talking about Lincoln Fire Rescue? I don't think so. It's already, it's already a lot, it's already a legal lot. Probably building permits. I mean, they probably will have to work through some of those issues and building permits, but as far as this body, I don't believe so.
Okay. Unless they want some exception to something, I would assume, you know, like a setback or something.
I'm going to make them follow the rules. I'm kidding.
Sure.
Building permits, yes, as Brian indicated. The funding for the station is already provided. The funding for the station and three others along the eastern corridor of the city is being provided by the corridor centax increase that is currently in process. And so, the funding is well underway.
Any other questions?
I mean, this is your time for rebuttal, if you want anything else.
No, thank you.
Anything else to say? Okay. Thank you. I entertain a motion.
Move approval. Lust.
Second, Sunderman.
Any discussion?
Yeah. You know, we spent many years on the commission reviewing residential developments in which the fire department would comment on the lack of response time for the new development. And so, I'm very happy to actually see us moving forward with the fire stations, and I think this is a great addition to the city because, you know, if you're, four minutes and eight minutes is a big difference, and I like to see those response times come down, and I think it'll help us feel more comfortable with more development in the south part of the city.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to support the motion. I think the experts have said this is a good location, and I think this is a good addition to the city as far as location. Jerry, please call the vote.
This is for Annexation 16013 for approval. Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. Okay, the next item is item 5.1, preliminary plat 16006, for a new preliminary plat to create an industrial park consisting of nine lots, property generally located at South Twenty-Fifth Street and Saltillo Road. This is final action on this item by the planning commission unless appealed to the city clerk within fourteen days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any exporté communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none. Commissioner Shear has indicated a conflict.
That is correct. Sorry about, thank you. Commissioner Hove?
Rachel Jones, Planning Department. This is an application for a new preliminary plat at Twenty-Fifth Street and Saltillo. And this is for an industrial park. This is the application area here. This area was annexed and rezoned to I-1 Industrial in 2007. In terms of surrounding land uses, there are agricultural and residential uses to the south and east, to the west is industrial, and then to the north, north side of Saltillo is a mix of industrial and commercial uses. Here's their site plan. According to the annexation agreement, these lots will not be served by city water or sewer. They will have individual well and septic systems. As part of the development, they're proposing a new street at Twenty-First Street, which would continue down and connect east to Twenty-Fifth Street. And we would require construction of center and right turn lanes at Twenty-First Street right of way with the first final plat. And then, we would also require dedication of right of way for conversion of both the Twenty-First Street and Twenty-Fifth Street intersections to roundabouts in the future. Today, Twenty-Fifth Street is a gravel road, and the north segment down to this proposed production drive would be paved at the time of final plating of this lot here in the northeast corner. And then, the remainder of South Twenty-Fifth Street would be paved later on at the time the property to the east redeveloped. And there's also a conservation easement on the south side, some floodplain on this lot here today. Any questions for me?
Questions for Rachel? No?
Yes, are the timing of improvements to Saltillo before this development goes through? Is that a part of the conditions of approval, or has that been considered?
So, if I'm not mistaken, improvement of Saltillo, or widening of Saltillo, is quite a ways into the future, but we are having them dedicate right of way in anticipation of future widening.
I noticed on that dedication of right of way that then it makes the acres less than three?
Right.
And then that's causing some problems with the wastewater?
Right, so, for individual well and, individual septic systems, the state requires that lots be at least three acres, so with the right of way dedication, maybe less than three acres. So they'll have to go through and revise the lot line a little bit, maybe take out a lot or two to make sure that they're at least three acres.
Rachel, the south beltway, isn't there supposed to be an interchange at, is it Twenty-seventh, or is it to the west or east of Twenty-seventh? Do you know?
I don't, I think it's to the west, but I don't know.
Okay.
David Carey with the planning department. The major interchange is just to the west of this location, and the south beltway would be just to the south of this property as well. So it's there, the corridor is right around them, but it's not through this property.
And it's already been looked at and everything?
Yeah, as far as this property is concerned, yeah.
Okay, great.
And South Twenty-Fifth Street would essentially be made a dead-end street once the beltway is constructed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Applicant here?
Good afternoon, my name is Tim Gergen. I represent the owner and developer of Saltillo Industrial Park. What Rachel has said, we've gone through many discussions with city staff, Public Works, we agree with all their conditions and with their comments, and would be happy to answer any questions you may have. This park is especially an advantaged location for an industrial park, especially what you're talking to with the south beltway. We have two interchanges for the south beltway, just on either side of this park, one with the west bypass and one at Twenty-seventh Street. So this industrial park will be highly connective to the entire city. So we're very anxious to get development going on this piece of land.
Question for Tim?
So with your first comment, I'm assuming you're okay with moving lot lines and getting them all adjusted to each have three?
That's correct, yes. We'd probably still stick with four lots along Saltillo, but we'll probably remove one of the lots south of the road and move that road just a little bit further south to keep accommodation of the DEQ's requirements of three acres.
Is this land in the floodplain?
It is. There is a small map floodplain right in this corner right here. It's a map floodplain, however, our survey indicates that it's actually not in the floodplain, it's actually above it. So we will do a letter of map revision to remove that little piece out of the floodplain.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
I do.
Okay.
I'm curious on the road issue along Saltillo. As this development is going to be moving forward before Saltillo gets widened, and I know that there's a lot of traffic that moves along Saltillo, and at certain times of day, it gets very congested, and I think people are having a very hard time making, personally, I actually, I drive Saltillo every day, so, and I've watched large trucks that work for a different, work for a rock company, move really quickly down Saltillo, and when people want to make a left-hand turn, they just plow to the right, over the shoulder. And just seeing that there might be more access onto Saltillo before it's widened gives me some concern.
Okay, I may defer that to Public Works if they are here, or...
We will be required to do right and left turn lanes as part of our first final plat, so that should alleviate your concern with that. This will be one of the intersections will be very similar to Fifty-S sixth and Saltillo, where you have the large center turn lanes, left turn lanes, that intersection function is fairly safer compared to the other ones. And so, we will rebuild our intersection with Saltillo.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Tim, anything else you want to say? All right, I entertain a motion. For approval? Ken Weber?
Second, Lust.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'm going to support the item. I'm anxious to see the south beltway go in, and hopefully this will be a good improvement with that, with this industrial park. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for conditional approval of preliminary plat 16006. Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear has a conflict, and Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
Okay, at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item, not on the agenda, may do so. For adjournment.